It's six o'clock, so we're actually starting with a farewell reception. This is a tough, tough night because tonight we're honoring two people who have given so much to this district and for such a long time. One who had an illustrious career in board service and then came back to help out and one that's been steadfast in service for a very long time in consecutive years. And it's Trustee Lightfoot and Trustee Nelson. As someone that has served on the board for, I guess it's two years now, but it feels like longer than that, it's really amazing that you all have spent, you know, dedicating yourself in the way that you have. And I know that I speak for myself and the rest of the board and the broader community in thanking you for that. Board service isn't easy. It pays really well. That's a joke. But at least not in dollars, but in the joy and the fulfillment of stepping in and really helping it does pay well. And, you know, I think that you all are kind of the consonant examples of people who are in this for the right reasons and in this to serve. So I just wanted to open up, I'm sure other people will say very, very kind things and save some words for a little bit later as well, but I did want to open up by saying this is what this occasion is for. Congratulations on many years of service. And I know Dr. Swift has some words as well.
Very good. Well, welcome everyone. We're so glad to see everyone join here this evening together to honor our trustees, Trustee Lightfoot and Trustee Nelson. I believe that Mr. Clulie has a video and I'm going to share just a few words. And then Trustee Johnson will check back in with you if that sounds all right?
Yep.
Okay. Very good. I believe we're open to the public. Yes, it looks like we have 40, some who have joined us from the community. Several of those folks have indicated that they would like to share remarks also. So trustees of honor, if it's all right, we'll just work through this process and at the end certainly provide you all an opportunity if you'd like to share any thoughts as well. It is truly a privilege to gather and honor the two of you. We have between you well over two decades of board service. And I think of board service as a little bit like dog years sometimes in that. And I think President Johnson was alluding to this. You may have two decades between you, but you have infinite wisdom and you've seen, pretty much seen it all. You've seen many days of governance, the highest highs and the lowest lows. And yet, at the end of the day, we so appreciate your contributions. So if it's all right, why don't we go to Mr. Clulie's video? And then we'll come back and touch base with President Johnson. And then I have just a couple of things to share before we open up to other commenters. Mr. Clulie? Thank you for joining us this evening to share our gratitude and to honor trustees Simone Lightfoot and trustee Glenn Nelson. We so appreciate the opportunity to share just a little bit of the immense gratitude that we feel as individuals and as an Ann Arbor community.
Trustee Lightfoot, as you probably know, is a product of the Ann Arbor Public School. She is a person who is a giver, and she's also a person that has served our country in the United States Air Force.
When Trustee Lightfoot first came onto the board, I saw that she was smart. She was brash. She was bold. She knew what students were going to need in this district, and she was not afraid to go after it no matter how long it took. And I think that persistence, that intellect, that understanding what students needed has served her so well over the course of her time. She has never lost sight of the most important stakeholders in our district, which are the students.
She understands the policy. She understands the politics, but she really stays rooted and connected to the families and the children who are really at the base of our school district. She also understands the teachers and staff and the concerns that they have as we're trying to solve different problems in the school district.
One of the major qualities that Trustee Lightfoot has is the ability and the willingness to listen not only to the citizens of the area, but also to students.
You know, she really did an amazing job in terms of being present and available to the families and the students of Ann Arbor Public Schools.
She took us all to a higher level in terms of thinking about the way that we are serving students, especially those that have been traditionally underserved in this district.
Trustee Lightfoot, I think, has done a remarkable job in terms of hearing the issues and concerns and thoughts of the parents in the Ann Arbor Public School system and reflecting those as the board makes policy, particularly as you look at, you know, how do we deal with discipline in our young people in a way that doesn't give them an overly penal outcome, but rather helps them grow as individuals and succeed to their utmost? And I think Simone has had a passion for that throughout her time on the board. I think it's just exemplary in so many ways.
Simone Lightfoot brings a sort of intellectual grace and elegance to the table. She just has that kind of presence. And I think she does that with everything she's involved in. She has a unique but effective way of communicating with people. And she also does a good job of advocating for children with special needs, being a fighter for closing the achievement gap, and also making sure that there's diversity and inclusion.
It's really not easy to be a good leader, especially in difficult times such as the pandemic or limited funding. But she seems to find a way to look for consensus, and it's through her insightful, deep diving questions that we really understand the issues in a more complete way.
As a colleague, she made me better, bolder, stronger. And I have to say that by the end of our time, she is one of my best friends in public service and will be forever.
Trustee Lightfoot, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you so much for the work that you've done on behalf of the students in the Ann Arbor School District, in the city of Ann Arbor, and frankly, on us all. You have such a moral clarity, focusing on issues of equity and responsibility. It's inspirational and just, we are so much better off for your having been on the school board. So truly and deeply, thank you.
Trustee Nelson is a careful, logical thinker who always seems to be searching for solutions. He has the ability and the willingness to ask tough questions, not only to citizens, but also to students. And those tough questions force people to think about things a different way, and he's very good at that.
And when the board had the opportunity to place him back on the board in order to fill out the term that was open, they could not have picked a better person to do that.
It seems like it's been the right chemistry for us to have his voice among the voices of the school board in solving this hundred-year pandemic problem. He has a wonderful basis of experience that he can draw on. He's been on the school board previously. He's been a very active member of our Ann Arbor community as a volunteer in many different aspects of our community.
Trustee Nelson has a background in economics. He has as much, if not more, knowledge about capital campaigns than most people in this community.
He has done more to raise the resource profile for the district, I think, than anyone through his work with the citizens' millage committees, with the bonds, with the countywide millages. He has built a solid foundation with the board about how to understand finance, how to wield the budget and the financial situation, however good or bad, and to do it always for the benefit of our students and our faculty.
His economics background has been very helpful. He understands how Ann Arbor Public School District runs and works. He really makes sure that we get the job done, we attend to the business at hand, but we also take into account the voices of Ann Arbor.
The citizens of Ann Arbor can rest assured that the money spent from the 2019 Capital Bond Campaign will be spent well. And I think they believe that because of the faith they have in large portion to the integrity of trustee Glenn L. Nelson.
Glenn has always had a passion for mental health and how that impacts our students, our young people, and how it impacts our community as a whole. And he brought that passion certainly to the board. And I think Glenn has always done his very best to understand both the nuances, but also the broad implications of policy at the Board of Education. And Glenn has been a great voice at that board and one for whom we are grateful for his service.
Glenn has always been the person on the board to sort of bring some level of harmony, work-togetherness, even when we didn't agree, no matter how heated, no matter how difficult, no matter how angry or how frustrated you were, or how happy and triumphant you were. Glenn always brought you back down to earth, to that place of stability, respect, and the idea that the board would work best if it worked best together.
I'll miss Glenn's service, obviously, but I'll also just miss the chances to interact with him in that role in such a positive way. But luckily, I know he'll be around and active, and I'll look forward to the next phone call with Glenn.
To have to say goodbye to him again on the board is a shame because no matter where Glenn serves, he brings that perfect blend of intelligence, experience, collegiality, and just harmony with him. And so I just want to say, bye again, and I hope your next stint on the board is as successful as this last tour.
Trustee Nelson, I wish to congratulate you on your service and thank you for your service on the Ann Arbor School Board. You know, as you and many municipal observers know, we don't always agree on municipal issues, but what observers do also know is that our conversations, our engagements, our disagreements, they've always been incredibly professional and fact-driven and values-driven. And we've always made an effort to do what's best for the community together. And so I just, I want to thank you for your work on the school board. It is, you know, school board members are saints among us and want to, you know, say that I look forward to seeing you around town or at city council chambers or truly wherever. So thank you for doing your work.
When I think of trustees Lightfoot and Nelson, you think about the qualities of strong leadership, courageous leadership, and that commitment to leading around that heart of the organization and the core value of children and of doing, at the end of the day, whatever decisions have to be made, doing what's best for children. It's those three elements that really have allowed for the contributions of Simone Lightfoot and Glenn Nelson. They will endure. Their service is not a service that will come and go for the district or for the community, but it's a service that will stand as a legacy years from now to remember what it means to lead on behalf of Ann Arbor's children. So we thank you for your service. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Clulie and Mr. Scott Nado. Thank you for that beautiful video. President Johnson, we'll turn to you now, if that's all right.
Thank you so much. And usually I'd like to go last, but I will have to jump out really quickly and then come back to the meeting later. So I did want to make sure that I said a couple additional remarks. And you've heard a lot of great things, and what's really funny is a lot of the same words that I was thinking about were mentioned in the video, so I won't repeat those. But what I will say to you each individually, trustee Lightfoot, thank you so much for, number one, helping me to see around corners. I think that's really, you know, something that personally you've brought where we can talk strategy, we can talk about what we might need to anticipate, and being able to have you to talk to about those things and to, you know, always know that you're going to be honest and always know that after it's all said and done, we're going to have a chuckle. We're going to keep it moving. So thank you so much for that. I will absolutely miss that. Trustee Nelson, thanks for just your steady, calming nature. You know, I've been so glad you talk about the calm in the storm and, you know, if there was a superpower that I would attribute to you, it would be kind of that calm in the storm, always being able to slow things down and to think things out. And even if you have to scratch something on a piece of paper to do a diagram to make it clear, you've always been there for that. And for both of you, I know I've talked to you both, know you're not going away, know that you plan to be a friend and a resource to the board going forward. And we'd be silly if we didn't use your expertise and insight, and we will continue to do that. And I hope that boards going forward do as well. So thank you so much. And that's the end of my remarks. I know we have a few more people that are lined up.
Very good. Thank you, President Johnson. Well, as long-serving and highly esteemed trustees, trustees Lightfoot and Nelson, we thank you for your investment of time and energy and the many sacrifices that you've made to serve the work of governance in the Ann Arbor Public Schools so faithfully over so many years. I said well over two decades among you, and you have truly seen it all. National crises, your service has been bookended by the tragedy of 9/11, the 2008 downturn and significant reductions to Ann Arbor Public Schools finances. And then as if that weren't enough, you now have spent 2020 addressing this COVID crisis, historic crisis for schools. So controversy, fires, floods, guns in schools, board campaigns, referenda, funding cuts, budgets, buses, and boundaries, not to mention a lineup of superintendents and so much more. We appreciate that as trustees, though, throughout all of those events, you've never shied away from or failed to think critically and deeply about our most significant challenges in ensuring quality public education in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. You very naturally ask the hard questions and dive into the struggle. I was thinking to myself this afternoon that even today, on your final board meeting of 2020, you were engaged with me asking those good questions like you always do, and that makes our work stronger. You've never shied away from the courage of your convictions and doing what the courageous thing was to do. Trustee Lightfoot, you are a force, a gladiator for the least of these among us, and you never fail to drive that question and that work. Your favorite place in the work is the place of the struggle, or the gap, or the question, or the concern. You never take the easy path, and I'm grateful for that. You're a natural community organizer. As Bretherhampton mentioned, you bring your military background and always maintain a discipline to the mission, a mission to serve children before anything else. Trustee Nelson, you never speak to your credentials, and in fact, I think it's one of the best-kept secrets in Ann Arbor, that you are indeed an esteemed economist. And yet, when we sit with you around budget, we always know that you will bring the depth of your skill, your experience, and your economic insight to our work and marry that to the needs of children and the practical realities of public school in this day and age. Our district has survived unprecedented cuts and is stronger for your work in this area of finance. You're also a true crusader for AAPS referenda, referenda of all sorts, whether a sinking fund, bond, operational renewal, whatever you take to the street and knock doors. You've knocked thousands of doors in support of AAPS referenda over the years. And in doing so, you've listened thoughtfully to community members right inside the front porch, right at the door, so that you could hear what folks were thinking, bring that back to our group, and improve our work. Trustees, you've accomplished enduring work, and generations of Ann Arbor's children will benefit from the legacy and from the investment of time and energy, sacrifice and work that you have given. You respect the governance process, and in that, you're a true statesman in the work. And I think that leaders across our country would do well to follow your example because you are always working more toward how to mobilize the board in the community to accomplish the work for children, rather than how can I drive my agenda or how can I get my way? That thought never, I've never seen that emerge in your work. I want to take just a moment, and I know that they're joining us this evening, and it may be possible for Mr. Clulie to bring them in if they would like, but I want to take just a moment to thank your families. They don't sit at the table with you on Wednesdays or sit through those long committee meetings. Your children, Jadica and Jaden, Janet and Lawrence, and your spouses, Margie and Philip. Thank you all for sharing your mom and husband, your dad and wife with us and with Ann Arbor's children. Thank you for sharing them so that they could do this important work. I know for certain that trustees Lightfoot and Nelson have missed valuable time and occasions with their own children while investing their time to serve Ann Arbor's children. We thank you, and we know that you won't get those minutes back, but we send you with our best wishes for so many moments of joy with family and friends. It may be hard at first to know what to do on a Wednesday evening. And so we wish you all those moments of time, and we hope you invest them in things you enjoy. This evening, we share our thanks on behalf of generations and of Ann Arbor Public Schools graduates and a grateful Ann Arbor community. March Piercy is a Center City Detroit raised, author and poet. And I'm just going to read just a couple of stanzas from her poem, "To Be of Use," as the benediction, and then we'll go to our speakers. I chose this poem because I believe it illuminates exactly our two trustees that we're honoring this evening. "To Be of Use." "The people I love the best jump into the work headfirst without dallying in the shallows and swim off with sure strokes almost out of sight. They seem to become natives of that element, the black sleek heads of seals bouncing like half-submerged balls. I love people who harness themselves and ox to a heavy cart, who pull like water buffalo with massive patience, who strain in the mud, in the muck, to move things forward, who do what has to be done again and again. I want to be with people who submerge in the task, who go into the fields to harvest and work in a row and pass the bags along, who are not parlor generals and field deserters, but move in a common rhythm when food must come in or the fire be put out. The work of the world is as common as mud. Botched, it smears the hands, crumbles to dust, but the thing worth doing, well done, has a shape that satisfies, clean and evident." Thank you, trustees, for indulging me this evening to share just our public gratitude on behalf of a grateful Ann Arbor. I know that we are joined this evening by many folks who want to also offer their gratitude and congratulations. Before we do that, I'd like to share with you, I know we've shipped it to you, and I'm not sure if it's arrived yet at your home, but Ms. Osinski will put up this beautiful piece of artwork, and I have mislaid my notes, so help me, someone if you will. This is from Carpenter Elementary, Ms. Osinski?
Carpenter Elementary School, yes, fourth grader.
Fourth grader from Carpenter Elementary. We chose it because it represents the eyes to see and the heart for care and compassion. And that is a very small token of our deep, deep gratitude. The artist's name is Anna from Carpenter Elementary. She did this in the fourth grade. She's now in the seventh grade, and we just appreciate the opportunity to offer that as our small token, and we hope it will be a reminder to you of our gratitude in this community. We're joined now by Ms. Jenna Bacalor, Mr. Emile Lautsana, and Ms. Jill Minnick, who will share their remarks as well.
Welcome.
Good evening, trustees and Dr. Swift and the public who's watching right now. I have some special words to say for trustee Nelson, because I've known you for nine years now, and I've often wondered, since I first met you back in 2012, what is it about you that gives you that extra energy and care and thoughtfulness? And finally, recently, I figured out what it is. It's the extra N in your name. You don't really need that N, but it's extra. And I think since you were given that name, you've been baked in doing extra things for people. It's essential to your nature. So for example, you will always take the extra step on behalf of students as a board trustee, from mundane things like doing your own analysis of district data, to going to multiple school events for many millages and handing out flyers, to joining and staying active in the Arab American Parent Support Group, to taking the extra time to listen carefully and respond wisely at the board table, and of course, for returning to board service last January to help. to help, um, as we entered into what we didn't know, but what was going to be a really hard year for the school district. And of course, I have to mention how strong of a supporter you have been for RAC-NED and for recreation in general. You don't see recreation and community education as amenities or something that's nice to have. You see them as fundamental to childhood. And I have appreciated all of the ways that you have done extra to express that over many, many years before my time. You've supported RAC-NED in many ways, um, such as sharing your remarks at the board table, to helping raise money for scholarships that RICs run for kids, and for your many years of service on RAC. And that's why I'm super lucky, because I'm sitting here today, and I know that I still get to work with you, because you're on the Recreation Advisory Commission. Um, basically, you cannot escape me ever. And, and, and I just can't wait to continue, um, hearing your support. So, I want to say, "Thank you, Glenn, um, for always having, having students at the heart of everything you do. And I wish you all the best, and I will see you next year."
That's great. And, um, we're moving to Emile Lautsana, please.
Good evening, trustees. Um, I just have a, a, a small anecdote, um, about presenting to the board, which I've brought dozens of items before you all, uh, for, you know, your review and approval. And, uh, trustee Lightfoot, I remember early on, when I was still pretty nervous coming to board meetings, and I was kind of just tucking out from Mr. Dimitrio's wing a little bit. And, uh, you gave me the buck-stops-here question. And you said, "So if the roof's leaking, that's you, right? And if the snow's not plowed, that's you, right?" And a couple more things. I had a little time to respond, and I, I basically said, "Yes, ma'am, that's me." And, uh, that was when I got my first write-on from trustee Lightfoot. And I felt like, uh, some of that nervousness was passing, um, past me. So, thank you for that and all of your service, and, and really just speaking your mind directly. And I appreciate how you've done that with, with me and with, in your service on the board. Um, trustee Nelson, obviously, thank you so much for your work on the bond campaign, Citizens' Millage Camp Committee. Um, bringing your wisdom and experience to that was part of the success of that effort. Um, and I, I would have to say, you, you ask some very sophisticated questions. First of all, as a presenter and a responder to your questions, you always do it in the way that you give us enough time to think of our answer while you're still asking the question. So, you ask the question first, and then you kind of pontificate on the question, and you ask it a second time so that we're ready with our response. Uh, there are also questions that, that really move the conversation and the understanding of the other board members, the community. Uh, it moves everybody along. But there was one, one question that you asked me, and I always answer, answer truthfully to the best of my ability. But you asked a question that I couldn't really respond to at the time. And so, I talked around the question a little bit, not exactly answering what you had asked. And when I finished, you looked, you realized that I hadn't answered your question directly. And, uh, you kind of gave me this look like, "I don't think he answered my question." Um, but you were kind enough to just say, "Thank you," and we moved to the next question. So, I appreciate your, your grades, your wisdom, and your, your tactful questioning.
Thank you, Emile. Uh, Jill Minnick, and then, uh, we have Mr. David Comza after Ms. Minnick.
Good evening, trustees. It's so good to see you this evening. Uh, on behalf of Kibana, I may, if I may, I just want to express that we thank you for your years of service to students and families of Ann Arbor Public Schools. Uh, trustee Lightfoot, your advocacy and engagement has enriched our work and the outcomes for all students. Um, but given my role, I particularly have appreciated your commitment and efforts to promote for the proper funding of public education over the years, and that will have lasting impact. And, um, given my role, I personally appreciate that, and also your attention to preserving general fund dollars and, uh, and, and, and for those funds that our taxpayers have entrusted to us. Um, but I have to mention something else that has always inspired me, uh, and frankly, has always moved me. Uh, and that is your personal investment in the students of the Ann Arbor Public Schools. Um, I, I keep coming back to that. And even though I've had the pleasure of serving with you, again, in my second round with Ann Arbor for just a couple of months, I keep going back to your genuine care and concern for every student. Um, you know, not only in their, the stakes of their education, but for the child and their whole being. I, I recall being at board meeting after board meeting where there might be a student performance or a presentation. And regardless of the topic, uh, you would always ask about, um, their dreams and their intended vocations. And, and you would build their confidence and talk about the importance of character. And, um, you would validate their worth. And that has always, uh, moved me very deeply. And I think about that a lot. Um, so, I, I thank you to have always been very personally vested in every child of the Ann Arbor Public Schools. And to me, that is very meaningful public service. And trustee Nelson, um, again, uh, the district has absolutely benefited from your skilled and careful stewardship as treasurer over the years, and your involvement with bond campaigns and so many projects over, over the years. Um, and I'm only sorry that I was only able to serve with you for a few months upon my return. And, and as I reflected back, it's, it's fascinating, because I never really had a long chance to serve with you. Um, but the thing that has always personally inspired me, trustee Nelson, is your curiosity. Uh, curiosity and staying curious requires wanting to consider all perspectives and all possibilities. And it requires a lot of energy to genuinely pursue new ideas and approaches. And your curiosity is exactly how I met you, and it led to a collaboration between two districts years ago around public funding and, and the advantages to all students. And the result of curiosity is often a very creative solution or to a need or a, or a problem, which may or may not stick. But the result of being curious and staying curious is always a deepening of our understanding and of our learning. So, may we always stay curious. Trustee Lightfoot and trustee Nelson, thank you for your service, and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm, I'm sorry.
Mr. David Allen Comza.
Thank you, Dr. Swift. Good evening, trustees. Trustee Lightfoot and Nelson, I have had the privilege of working with you during my entire career here with the Ann Arbor Schools. You are tonight being honored for your service on the Board of Education. There is a saying that goes something like this. No person, no person was ever honored for what they received. Honor is the reward for what was given. Honor is the reward for what was given. And you indeed deserve to be honored for what you have given, giving tirelessly and selfishly of your time on behalf of all of our students and the Ann Arbor Public Schools community. I have personally observed your service at many meetings, many lasting into the early, early morning hours. I have recognized your service to all children to be one of your guiding principles. I am forever in your debt for having learned from you. Thank you, trustee Lightfoot. Thank you, Dr. Nelson.
Beautiful. Thank you. We're so, uh, pleased to be joined this evening by two trustees, Amerita, and also by Jason Morgan, Chair of our Washtenaw County Board. Um, Chair Morgan, would you like to begin? And then we'll move to trustee Amerita Manley. Trustee Amerita, stand.
Absolutely, thank you. There is quite a long list of folks honoring, uh, trustees Lightfoot and Nelson here. Um, so I will be short and sweet. I just want to say, on behalf of, uh, the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners, thank you for your service. We appreciate the way that you have served and the tenure of your service. Uh, I think the one big thing I would like to say is that the two of you show up in the community. You're present, you listen to folks, you listen to residents, and you, you have a very, a very keen understanding of the issues. Uh, but really, that big piece is just that you're present and you're active in the community. Uh, and I see that from so many of the, the amazing school board members here. But, uh, it has been amazing to, um, collaborate with you and just get to know you over these years. And so, I will just simply say, "Thank you, and we are very honored to have your service here in our community."
Thank you. Trustee Amerita Manley, so wonderful to have you join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Um, hello, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for this opportunity to give congratulations to trustee Lightfoot and trustee Nelson. I have known trustee Ne- let Nelson for a long time. I don't know if he remembers this, but I really met him before he ran the first time. We were with Girls' Group, um, and, uh, we were talking about the board, actually. And, uh, then later on, he ran. So, I've known him for a long time. And even at that time, when I first met him, I knew that he really cared about the district. He really cared about the students, and he really wanted to make a difference, because he asked all the right questions. And by asking the right questions, I felt that he would do a good job. And he has. He's like the Energizer Bunny, though. I mean, you know, all those years before, and then coming back. I don't know where you get all that energy from, but I, you need to give me some of it. Um, but, um, anyway, I think that, um, you will enjoy your retirement if you stay retired. And, uh, that time that you've given to the board will soon fill up with something else. I know mine has. Um, I didn't have the opportunity to serve with you on the board, but I did serve with you with the Community RAC-NED. And, um, as, uh, Jenna Bacalor has said, it was, uh, great to hear your point of view, and you, you really, um, was interested in making sure that that particular committee did a great job. So, congratulations on your retirement. Enjoy and be healthy. Uh, trustee Lightfoot, what can I say? It took the four years that I was on the board and served with you. I tried really hard to get you not to say Ms. Manley and to say Pat, but you could never do it. And that's because I knew you in high school. And just like in high school, when you received the Martin Luther King Award for your commitment and, uh, love of people and, and students, you have carried that on throughout your tenure as, as a trustee to Ann Arbor Public Schools. I have watched you grow. I've watched you be a mother. I've watched you be a trustee. I've watched you be a friend. You have so much to offer, and you are just beginning. So, I wish you the very best as you leave this board. I know you're not retiring, because you are so involved in everything. But I want to thank you for your service. I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve with you. And I want to, uh, say that I hope we will continue to be friends. And at some point, you'll say Pat and not Ms. Manley. So, congratulations to you, and congratulations to Glenn.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, I should say President Amerita Christine Sted.
Thank you so much, Dr. Swift. It's so nice to see all your faces, and what an honor to have a chance to say something, um, brief but, but impactful, I hope, about trustees Nelson and Lightfoot, and how appropriate as well that you're retiring, maybe it will stick this time, we'll see, um, from the board together, because you two were such a powerful team. Um, especially in my early years on the board, uh, just watching the two of you do your work. Um, trustee Nelson, you, you, I think I told this story the first time, but I, I wanted to tell this story for others here again tonight about the, the power, the impact that people have when you spend a little time and invest in people. And, um, in 2000, I want to say six or seven, I, I joined a finance committee to advise the board on finances. I didn't know anything about finances, but I know I couldn't make cookies very well, so this was a better way to spend my time serving the school district on behalf of my children. And we had a, a room, a small room, of people that were interested in school finances. And, um, in that room, which got smaller over time, because we worked so intently. But, uh, Norm Herbert was leading our session. Steve Norton was in the room. Jack Panich was in the room, and a, and just a couple other people. And this guy showed up, and he clearly had biked there. He wore these pants that he had rolled up, and he's got a flannel shirt on, and pretty unassuming. But man, did he start laying down some of the details for us unanointed. And that group, we spent twenty, at least, hours a week together every week, um, and delivered an eighty-some-page report to the board as just like a little mini PhD in economics, which was enormously helpful. But from there, we led millage campaigns. We served on the board together. I remember Glenn, at meetings, we'd ask, Deb Mexicott, when she was president, would say, "Is there anything else for the board to report?" This is the top floor of the library, uh, where we had our boardroom. And Glenn would have this stack of papers for all the events he had been at that week. The coral, the performance, every grade, every, every building he had been to that week, every week. And that's a huge, uh, testament to the, the dedication that you had for, for everything with the district. And, and you were the example of what it meant to be a trustee, because the, this isn't about a singular issue, except for maybe children. Maybe that's the singular issue that we all come together for. And trustee Lightfoot, you taught me so much about just how fierce you had to be to fight so hard. You were that, always. And, um, you may remember a panel we had somehow gotten together of our elected officials. This was early on in our service, maybe a year in, at Pioneer High School. We invited all of our elected officials to come and talk about the cuts that had just been, uh, you know, impugned on us as a district, and what they were going to do about that, and what that meant. We had teachers come to the stand. We had everybody gather around. And Simone gave, um, me, in particular, a really good lesson about just what you have to do in politics to be effective. And while that was effective in the, in the sense that it raised awareness, we had so much more of a fight ahead of us, and I just had no idea. But I was so honored to work by your side over the years and fight on behalf of children. Just to watch you, though, progress with competence and poise, it's been such an honor, uh, this whole time to serve with you and to, and to be your friend and a, and a colleague. And, um, I just, I'm so proud of both of you. I'm so honored to have a chance to just wish you well. And I can't wait till we get a chance to hug each other again and safely and, um, do some more work together. But what, what an honor to have you both serve our district the way you both have for so long. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's so great to see you all, and thank you. Uh, we do have a number of principals who've joined us. Uh, so, uh, trustees, if you want to glance down that list of attendees, you'll just see a lot of names that you recognize. And, um, we do have someone who's joined, probably gets the award from the furthest distance. And Andrew, he has agreed to, uh, be shown on the screen. So, if you want to bring him in. And then trustees, uh, will move from these community remarks to, um, to the trustees, the sitting trustees, if you would like. And, um, I don't know if you recognize this young man who's coming in the door there. Do you see him? He may, he may be having trouble with this signal. Let's see. Mr. Dimitri?
Oh, Dimitri, really?
Hello.
Wow!
How's everyone? If I can say a few words?
Yes, yes.
Um, first, uh, thank you to, uh, both of you for, um, you know, for your service, for all the work that you've done on the board. Uh, but especially, uh, for all- But especially uh, for all the support that you have uh, shown the, the administration um, uh, while I was there and for um, for helping us uh, grow, for leading us in the right direction. And um, I um, I, I want to thank Simone for her uh, very honest and straightforwardness. Uh, you always knew where she was coming from and uh, what she was expecting. And uh, I always appreciated those, uh, those conversations. Uh, I wanted to uh, thank uh, Glenn for uh, all the support. The uh, to help me mature as a uh, as a person of, of finance uh, with his uh, knowledge. And um, I want to um, help, I want to uh, I want to say thank you to, to uh, both of you for your fidelity to, to the children of Ann Arbor and for uh, just being great, great people and um, and treating me like a grown up. I really appreciate that. I wish you all the best and uh, uh, I know Glenn, uh, you're retiring and, and I always, now that I'm retired, I say every day is a Saturday. So enjoy. And Simone, I hope you get to retire soon. I know you're too young.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, it's wonderful to hear your voice, Mr. Dimitri. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for letting me.
Oh, it's so great. Um, are you actually on the beach right now or?
I am about thirty yards from the beach.
Don't rub it in.
All right. Well, I believe we have two more community members who are joining us by video. Uh, so Mr. Cluley has that. And then we'd like to show you all in the community a place where we're recording all of these honors. So we'd like to show that off as well. And then uh, Vice President Kelly will hand it back to you for trustee remarks. Um, if that sounds all right, Mr. Cluley.
This is State Senator Jeff Erwin. Uh, thank you for allowing me to be a part of this great celebration. And just to thank and congratulate uh, trustees Nelson and Lightfoot. Uh, I, I've had an opportunity to work with both of you for so long and I just want to thank you on behalf of the people of the eighteenth district. Uh, I'm out here in front of our beautiful Capitol where we've been fighting for more resources for our schools. And I know that both of you have been champions for our schools for so many years and school board is such an incredibly important role. It's such an incredibly difficult role to serve in because the decisions that you're making are so important and so intimate to our families. And so I hope that your time on the board has been incredibly rewarding. Uh, because you've done a great job. Uh, the community appreciates you. Thank you for putting in so many works, giving your heart, so many ears. Uh, thanks for giving your heart and soul. It's so important and um, it's just an honor for me to stand in front of the Capitol, uh, and on behalf of the people of the eighteenth district, thank you again. And encourage you to uh, enjoy your time away from the board and reflect with um, with, with honor and pride uh, um, upon the work that you've done for our community. So thank you.
Hi, everyone. Youssef Rabhi here, state representative from the fifty-third district, representing most of the city of Ann Arbor. And I just wanted to tune in today to thank uh, two of our fantastic trustees, Simone Lightfoot and Glenn Nelson. Thank you both so much for the incredible service that you have provided to the people of the greater city of Ann Arbor, to all of us uh, that live in the Ann Arbor publics. Um, thank you for all that you have done on behalf of the students and the kids all across our community. I know that it takes an incredible amount of effort and energy to be sitting through those long board meetings, sifting through uh, budgets and documents to try to figure out what the right thing to do is for the people. And I know that both of you have really stepped up to the plate over your many years of service and have really served uh, with an amazing amount of passion. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank you both for the time that you've put in. Uh, but also the legacy that you have left to the Ann Arbor Public Schools, to our community as a whole and to all of the students that are part of this fantastic school system. Thank you once again for all that you have done.
So I think Mr. Cluley is going to show a, a um, structure called a kudo board. And uh, trustees, these are not finished yet. They're works in progress. But we wanted to give a shout out to the community and Mr. Cluley will be sharing um, the website location so that others who have joined us um, can uh, comment or drop in a song or a quote or a thank you or a photo. Uh, so that you will have this um, in a week or two or three. Uh, we'll uh, have these published in a form where you will have them. So um, in the meantime, you can go on there and look and see all of the voices from the past and present uh, that are there uh, sending you their best wishes. Oh, and here is the location. Um, and that will be up for everyone uh, for folks to add to your remarks. Very good. Vice President Kelly.
Thank you, Dr. Swift. Um, thank you to everyone who turned out tonight. This is really great to see all these faces and, and, and hear your voices. Because we have such a great turnout tonight, I'm afraid not everyone fits on my screen. And so um, the, the trustees who'd like to make remarks, can, can we use our usual method of, of raising hands there in the participant button box and um, establish, you know, uh, some order to make our remarks and, and we'll uh, honor our, our colleagues here. Are there trustees who'd like to make comments?
I'd like to go last if that's possible.
Sure thing, trustee Baskett. Trustee Lazarus.
Oh, there he is. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for, thank you, Vice President Kelly. Um, hello, everyone. This is a happy but very sad evening for us. Um, trustee Lightfoot, thank you very much for the ability to serve with you and for your service to the community, to the children and your military service. It's very, I, I appreciate all of that. It's been an honor to serve with you. Um, I always appreciate your straightforwardness and always knowing the right thing to say and knowing exactly in your resolve in knowing what is the right thing to do as a district. To make sure that our students and our community is served well. I appreciate that and I'll always keep that in mind as I, as I serve. You've raised the bar to be a board member very high. So thank you very much. Um, trustee Nelson, Dr. Nelson. It's been a great pleasure to serve with you. Who knew four years ago when I met you on the campaign trail and I was trying to get your support and you wouldn't give it to me? And it was, I was crushed, but I learned and we stayed in touch and we worked on many citizen millage campaigns and I got to know you and you got to know me a little better. And here we are today and we were able to pass and walk the streets of Ann Arbor together in the cold and the rain uh, to pass a billion dollar bond together. I'll never forget those days and those moments. So I appreciate it. And I definitely appreciate everything you've taught me in uh, the school financing. It is not what people think it is. And I would not be able to comprehend even a minute portion of that if I hadn't spent hours and you hadn't spent hours with me trying to teach me how to look at the finances and understand where the money comes from and how it should be spent. So I appreciate all your time and I, I look forward to continuing to be a good friend with you in the future. Thank you both for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, honoring trustee Baskets, uh, wish to go last. I'll, I'll make a few remarks. Uh, trustees, I, there, there is no reason for me to recap uh, the, the things that our, our fellow community members here have already said. And, and I just want to echo my gratitude for your service and and say that you've made the district better. You've made our community better. And you've made me better as a trustee. Um, trustee Lightfoot, um, Dr. Swift said that you never take the easy path. And that's true. I, I would say in, in some cases you've um, made taken a very hard path and made it easy for us. You are just the consummate strategist. A, a, an elegant stateswoman who knows and has taught me that we do the hard work in committee. We do the hard work when we're doing our homework. And so when we come to this table, we're in a position to better serve the public. And so thank you for those lessons. Um, to trustee Nelson, um, thank you so much for what you've done in our community from, from your work on capital campaigns and your work around um, mental health awareness and service. Uh, you, you're just the, the consummate public servant. Um, and you bring to that work a model of, of coming to it with inquiry and with balance. And uh, when I find myself getting wrapped around the axle, I think about the lessons I've learned from you about taking a moment to take a breath and thinking about these things in a holistic way and, 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 and sometimes I, I just think what, what would trustee Nelson do and, and, and make an attempt? Because, because I've really appreciated how you've modeled that for us. Um, you both are leaving some tremendously big shoes to fill. Um, and I would just like to say thank you again because you are some of the finest public servants I've had the pleasure of knowing. So so thank you both for, for your work on this board and in this district and, and you know, for, for everything you're going to give us right up to the very end tonight. So thank you. Trustee Gaynor, do you have a few remarks before trustee Baskett says something?
Um, just want to mention from my personal experience, I've known both trustees uh, much further back than my own service on the board, not before their service. Um, I had the privilege of teaching trustee Lightfoot's daughter at, at Craig Middle School. I remember the many conversations we had about teaching math and such, but um, also taught social studies and it was such a treat. When I was running and campaigning in two thousand sixteen, we'd be at a school where I'd be passing out flyers for me and um, Simone's daughter would be uh, passing out flyers for her and I, you know, we'd make sure to send people to the others to make sure they had all the information, but it was, you know, great to see that civics in action and and if she's um, watching today, greetings. Um, would love an update. And for trustee Nelson, I would, I would go to meetings around town, community meetings, political, social, all sorts of things. And invariably I'd look around and, and, and see Glenn there. And I thought, this is a conscientious person who really cares about the community. Uh, you know, above and beyond his work on the board. And I just gained a lot of respect um, for you, Glenn, for that. And then when I was mulling over the decision to run, you were the trustee that you had retired then, but you were the one I went to for a very hard to hard talk on, on whether, you know, it made sense for me to run. I, I won't tell you wasn't aside that I went back to the friend supporting my running and I said, and I talked to Glenn and I don't think I'm going to run based on what he said. But here I am. So it goes. And again, everybody's talked about your great service on the board, your thoughtfulness, Glenn. And Simone, you know, I like people who are principled and, and speak, you know, very clearly about that. So you know, I'll always cherish that. So again, thanks to both of you and look forward to seeing you, you know, both. Um, Susan, trustee Baskett, I think it's your turn.
Thank you, thank you. Well, we knew this day would come. Bittersweet. And boy, I'll tell you, um, Simone was the first one to, to remind me that I'm the longest serving member of the board. And at first I thought she was just calling me old. But then I remembered Simone commands respect. She is an honorable person who respects the honorable. And, and I realized today that, that I wouldn't be here in this questionable title without these two trustees. I first met Glenn Nelson when I was fighting um, the board. Uh, he was a much younger trustee then. Um, and I was advocating for the then to be fired superintendent and it was with Glenn's encouragement and one of my first campaign checks that I got um, that I ran for the board. And then years later, when I was weary and considering retirement, it was Simone and Glenn who convinced me to run again, again with their checks. And now you guys are leaving me. Wow. Um, many do not realize that over the years I spent more time sitting with these two trustees than anywhere else at the board table. And first it was by a, a chance arrangement and then it became a comfortable place to be. And as someone said, um, and it's very appropriate for both of you, chance made us colleagues. Our craziness made us friends. And think about it. I mean, how crazy is it for a trustee like Glenn Nelson to retire after twelve years? And then seek an appointment af- after desperately seeing how we, we desperately needed him rather. And then to say he's only going to serve one year. I mean, talk about crazy. Talk about crazy. And my friend Simone, we both know that in order to be a successful black woman anywhere, especially in Ann Arbor and serving on this board, we have to be crazy. We have to respond to crazy. And sometimes we just have to be perceived as crazy. We've been through some crazy stuff. Um, to both my friends, as someone more eloquently said, so much of me is made from what I learned from you, each of you. I'm going to miss you. And as many of you know, the school board work is hard, especially recently. And in a crazy sort of way, we all enjoy this work and working on behalf of people whom we don't know. Some we do know and some we don't like and who don't like us. But we do the work with little tangential rewards. However, as someone more eloquently said before me, the only thing more important than liking what you do is liking the people you do it with. So look at us. We are the epitome of diversity. Um, and as someone again, you're not, no one's going to get me on plagiarism tonight. I'm looking at the words diversity. We are different individuals, valuing, valuing and accepting each other regardless of skin color, gender, intellect, talents or years. Additionally, we're proof that we don't always have to agree to be agreeable and yet productive in getting the work done. Besides our, our physical differences, we are so different, yet collegic and often productive, often productive. Glenn, for example, is low key and often avoids the limelight. He's a farm boy. He's proud to say that. He's methodical and thinking and methodical and some say slow and speaking and getting to the ultimate point. And yet very graceful and even in a heated debate. Yep, yep. And I think I've told you guys before, what at the time when he helped Simone draft a resolution that he agreed disagreed with, but you weren't quite sure because he was working so hard for her to get it so right. And then he ultimately voted against it. Now, however, Simone and I learned to leverage Glenn's talents. Um, I was the first to call him D. White Man. And for those of you who know anything about black entertainment and culture, D. White Man is the Caucasian brother whom both black and white people will believe over you. He, he may be, you may be classier, more versed on the topic, but certain people need to know that D. White Man affirms what you're saying. And we gave that credibility to him because now as black women, we both really could get angry about this, but we leveraged our colleagues' diversity. And then we laughed often later, we laughed about it. And Simone, who always seemed to have a camera or to look for a photo op, not in a bad way, but she wanted to photographically document everything. And she's not so methodical, but she's passionate. She's passionate. She's a quick thinker and will speak quickly and loudly against any indiscretion she perceives on any topic that she believes in. And she holds people accountable, as has already been mentioned. She can be your best friend or your worst enemy. And I pity at times and I'm amused when she engages with people who truly don't know her talents. To more easily sum up the qualities of my trustees, I think of the phrases that have often guided me with you guys over the years. For Glenn, it's always him telling me, don't let perfection be the enemy of the good. I mean, in my earlier years of the board, I pushed for the ultimate perfection in so many ways that because this is who we are, we're Ann Arbor and especially on the board. And I get so frustrated at sometimes of our, about our actions. And there would be Glenn with that saying. And so when I heard it last night as we were in a small group meeting, don't let perfection be the enemy of the good, I just, I just had to laugh. Because I don't think Rebecca had heard this before. And it was like, oh my gosh, it's so Glenn. And the same for Simone, it's all about the mission. Right? It's about the mission. And the same for Simone. It's all about the mission, right? It's about the mission. She always pushes for high expectations, because we are Ann Arbor, but how often she reminds us to focus on that mission. Do whatever we need to do to get the job done. Avoid the distractions. Whether they be intentional or not, we focus on the mission, whether it's further refining it, protecting it, or just getting the things accomplished. So to summarize, you guys, you deserve so much more. We really should be having this over champagne and cocktails. But you know, I'm going to show you my little cocktails here that I've come up with, the scrimp and crackers and the wine, and my fake wine, fake wine and cheese. And so I toast to two of you. We'll miss you. At least some of us will miss you. You have served this community so very well and with such integrity. I thank you and wish you all the best in the next stages of your life. Colleagues like you are harder to find, so much harder to find than toilet paper, Lysol spray, and Clorox wipes in a pandemic. My colleagues and my forever friends. Thank you.
Oh, well said, Trustee Baskett. Thank you. Trustee Lightfoot and Nelson, we have put you on the spot all night long, but we don't want to conclude without giving you an opportunity to, if you have any remarks that you want to share. Sure.
I'll start. And I want to start by acknowledging there are enough participants. I'm not sure who's out there, but conceivably, my sister Anne and her husband Audie from Montana, a ranch in Montana, and my brother Jim and his wife Charlene from a farm in Minnesota may be out there. And if so, I just want to acknowledge it and say, my siblings and I were very lucky to grow up in a good family. And as we all know, that makes a huge difference. So thanks to them, and if you're listening, thanks for everything. I want to start by saying a word about Simone, if that's okay. I feel like I should be sitting next to Simone. For all the years that the board met in person, that I was on the board, I sat next to Simone. And many of those years also Susan, as she's mentioned. But it was nice. And our relationship goes back, my relationship, Simone goes back about 11 years. It was late 2009. I remember it very well. It was Saturday, December 5. Simone had applied for a vacancy left by Helen Gates-Bryant, when she resigned. And we met for the usual purpose of Simone was asking about the board, wanted me to know who she was, and I was interested in this candidate. And she just blew me away in terms of her political knowledge and her insights on people. Simone, I don't think we should, and we're both very honest people. And I shouldn't let everyone think you're perfect. As good as you are, you're not quite perfect. And the example I would use is on your insights on people, and you have periodically told me about the characteristics of white guys from Minnesota. And it wasn't always the most positive characterization. And I'm sure that must not be quite right, of course. But seriously, Simone has taught me so much over the years, especially in the area of political thinking, of the insights on how people think, which is, of course, related to the politics. Her devotion, as everyone has noted, to the education for all children. And so I just appreciate so much getting to know you. I look forward to our continued interaction. We're not saying goodbye anyway. Simone, we're, I as a person and the community is so lucky. You've spent 11 years on the board. And to everyone on this video conference, I just wanted to say a great, big thank you. It's really overwhelming. It's really been a privilege and an honor to serve on this team. And the team, I very much include the community. The community members are the bedrock of the support for education in Ann Arbor. And to be on a team that's working for the well-being of all children is a wonderful thing. So it's been, it's been an honor to do it. And the other thing that happens is there's something about the self-selection process of people who care about all children, not just their own children, but all children. They turn out to be really nice people. And so I just have enjoyed all of you, because you're just nice people and relationships are what really brings happiness. So I thank all of you. You've made my life so much better. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank each and every one of you to, I am equally touched, moved. I will miss each and every one of you. Thank you to Pat Manley and to Christine Sted and Deb Mexicott, who just were stalwarts. And to be able to have served with them, Andy Thomas out there in the world, really just an honor and a privilege to work with all of you. Thank you to Dr. Swift for coming in and really, metaphorically speaking, becoming the stepmom to our whole family called the district at a time when we had a need for your type of leadership and your service after some tumultuous time, and you have come and helped steady the ship. And I am the chief cheerleader of you and advocating all the time for those board members that are left and new. Put a hedge of protection around Dr. Swift. You protect Dr. Swift, we're protecting the district. Everybody shouldn't be able to come at her and say anything about her, because we've served, those of us who've been here a long time, we've served when we didn't have someone at the helm. And we got phone calls about late buses and test scores and tardy bells and things that a school board should not be getting, because we needed someone with her skill and leadership at the helm. And she has done nothing but a yeoman's job. We're very blessed to have her. So I thank her. I thank the team that she has amassed together. We have an amazing team that works very hard. I'm going to miss all of you. I'm going to miss Amy Osinski, my girl. Just behind the scenes, so professional in the secretarial role, makes the work that we do, the very wonky, technical work, very pretty, with nice pictures to help us pass bonds and millages and convey messages that we need to convey to the community. So we will miss you. Thank you, Dr. Swift, for putting the right people in the right seats on your team. That's been very, very important to us. I'd like to thank my boss, who is listening, Andy Buckstbaum, for the National Wildlife Federation, who continues to be super supportive of the time that I have had to put in over the years at the school board and in airports and all of those things. He was very wonderful in allowing my board service to be prioritized. So I appreciate him, as well as, again, the new board members, all the board members that I've had the opportunity to serve with and the ones not. I want to thank, last but not least, really my family, who, you know, they just have to deal with a whole lot of stuff when their parent is out on the front lines like this. And so I just want to thank our daughters, who taught me very early on not to say "um" when I'm speaking. They would count them. When I would come home, they would tell me how many I said. I had, our baby daughter would tell me I needed to stop talking with my hands, that I should sit on them when I'm at the school board table. And now both of them are grown. They're on this call. I was hoping I could see them. I don't know where they are, but I saw their names. I love all of you. My husband's at work, couldn't be with us, but love our family. Thank you for the service, for the opportunity to serve, and I'm not done yet. My work requires, as the National Director of Urban Initiatives and Environmental Justice at the nation's largest conservation organization, the work requires that I continue to serve. It'll be under the guise of clean water and a conservation corps and clean air and habitats and all those things, but I will continue to serve and look out for this district that I love so much. Susan Baskett, lady, man, I'm going to miss you more than you know. People think I'm raw and direct, honey. Please. I just love you. You make me laugh. You tell it like it T.I. is. And I will miss you at the board, but we will definitely be in touch around our local politics. So thank everybody, the entire community. I just love and appreciate my church family at New Hope Baptist Church and all of you. Just thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Trustees, thank you so much. We are, oh, we have a visitor, Trustee Lightfoot.
You're the daughter.
Hi, hello. Thank you guys so much for having me on. Hi, Mom. Hi, everyone. First, I want to say, Mom, I am so beyond proud of you. The hard work and dedication you put in every day for the school board is admirable. Being a product of Ann Arbor Public Schools and having you on the board felt really cool, because a lot of teachers would ask, "Wait, are you related to Simone Lightfoot?" And I would kind of feel embarrassed, because all the kids would be like, "What the hell? Why is the teacher so surprised?" And so it just made me feel famous, made me feel kind of cool around schools. I felt like I had a little status symbol with you being put. What I really loved was how much you didn't hold your tongue, which is very important for roles like yours, mostly in this time where lies and manipulation is so common. You stay like our last name, bringing light into whatever you touch. Again, I'm so proud of you, Mom, and I love you. Mr. Nelson, also, thank you so much for having my mom's back and keeping the numbers and budgets right. Without you, it'd be like the D. Song, no money, but more problems. Thank you guys so much. I love you all.
Oh, beautiful.
Thank you.
Oh, what a great cap. Thank you. Trustees, we're not done with you. As Dr. Swift said, we are making sure that you get links to the kudo boards. You'll be receiving the art in the mail. Dr. Swift, did you indicate that you wanted to say one more thing?
I just wanted to make sure that, Trustee Nelson, if you wanted to bring your family in, we didn't want to make that assumption. So if you would like to, we'd love to. Mr. Cluey is standing by to do so.
Oh, for a minute, sure. Let's do it.
And will you?
I can see that.
Will you help us with the names?
There's Anne.
Oh, there's she. There's Margie. Hi.
Margie, my wife. And my brother Jim and his wife Charlene may be coming in.
Very good.
Janet, my daughter, and Lawrence, my son. And I'm not sure how many are on the call.
Very good. Well, Andrew is working to bring them in. Margie, so great to see you. Thank you for coming.
That's fantastic.
It's been a lot of fun to hear what people have to say about Glenn. Really nice. Thank you, everybody.
Well, and thank you, Margie and Jayden and all of you for sharing your folks with us. I know you've missed a lot of evenings with them over the years and a lot of days with them. And I just want to thank you for that sacrifice, because that time has been an investment in our children, in our school district, and in our community. Thank you both.
Thanks, 12 of you.
We appreciate everyone who's joined us this evening. And just another shout out that the kudo board will be posted. So those who would like to offer remarks there or a photo or a story, that would be great. And Vice President Kelly, I believe that brings us to a wrap of this preliminary part of our public meeting.
Very good. Well, thank you, Dr. Swift.
Thank you all so much, so much.
Good job.
Thank you.